Actually, we're going to read this first. This will explain what's going on and how we're going to handle it.
Can we begin?
Yeah.
Okay. Free application discussion on Dollar General. Bob Gage, representative from GBT Realty, is here tonight to overview a proposed development and provide an update of where their application is in the town review process. Please allow the representative an opportunity to make an initial presentation to the board, and once completed, the public will be allowed an opportunity to ask questions and/or make comments. At that time, please raise your hand if you wish to speak and direct your questions to the representative. Please be respectful of speakers. Do not interrupt or speak outside of your opportunity to speak. This is not a public hearing. There is not an active application before the planning board at this time. If the application for a variance is pursued, the Town Zoning Board of Appeals will be required to hold a public hearing where comments and concerns will be recorded. If a variance is granted by the zoning board of appeals and the application is pursued with the town planning board, another public hearing will be required as part of that review. Thank you.
You want to start your presentation to us?
Sure, however you want to.
Yeah, just give the presentation and don't interrupt us. Let him leave.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Basically, why we asked for this public meeting is just to get a feel of how the town felt about a Dollar General coming into town. Typically, at this stage, we would have already submitted an application and started that process. We did get some feedback that there was some opposition, so we wanted to come and see exactly how everybody felt about it. I understand that one of the main issues is the location. We have looked at several sites in town. This is the one that works best for us. There are a couple others available. Not sure if they'll work or not. If this does not go through and if it doesn't look like that a variance would be approved, then we would likely go and look at a few other sites to see if any of those would work. There has been a couple sites suggested, but they're six miles outside of town. One of them was. And this is the location that Dollar General wants to be. They want to serve your community, so they want to be as close to in-town as they can get. This lot was the obvious choice for us. The topographics work. The size, the location, close to downtown, it was the best location, the best price. It works well for us. I understand, and I have talked with the adjacent property owner across the street. We had a discussion prior to this meeting starting. I understand his concerns. I sympathize with him. I get all the issues that will come with us coming to town and what that impact is going to be on him. So, that being said, he did take me downtown just a few minutes ago and looked at -- Chris, what was the name of that place?
Rudy.
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 Rudy. So, there's, I guess, an old house that's abandoned at this point. Looks like it's about to fall down. There's a -- used to be a building supply back behind it. So, that's -- potentially may work. We just have to see what the lot lines are, how many acres are with it, if it's big enough to support a store. What we're planning to do is put in a 9,100-square-foot Dollar General. It'll have 30 parking spaces. It'll have an on-lot septic system. I believe you don't have public water here either, correct?
No, that's not.
Okay, so it'll have a well as well, along with a stormwater detention facility, which is required by the state. So, all of that would have to fit on that lot. It looks like it may be a little bit narrow, but it's something that we can investigate if this does not work out. We do want to be here. We are prepared to spend a little over $1 million to put a store into your community. It will generate, to start with, 10 employment opportunities and go up to as many as 15. We think it's a big benefit. We think that everyone in town will benefit from it. We think it'd be a great relationship if we can get here and get something that works for everybody. We do not want to come in here, push anything down your throat. We want to be good neighbors. We want to make this work for you and us. And if this lot is not the one, it's not the one. So, basically, this is just -- for me, it's information to get from you, get your feedback, any suggestions you have, if you know of any other lots that are relatively close. Like I say, we can't get outside of town much further than what we are here, and it still works for us. So, if there's any other opportunities that you know of or somebody that's willing to sell us a couple acres, we'd certainly be interested in talking about that. So, I guess, with that being said, I'm done.
You've got any other business?
Yeah, we have other business. Don't ask questions yet. Yeah, I'll make a motion closer. The objections. You're open. You can ask the man you want.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. You didn't worry about ours.
But he doesn't -- he didn't say anything about the specific site.
Talk to him.
He didn't say anything?
The site's right next door.
Okay.
Right here, right there.
Owned by?
There's two acres. I believe the owner's -- the seller is here.
Okay.
I think I saw him. That would be me.
Partial what?
There he is.
Okay, all right. So, it is, okay.
Crusher? Cruiser? Cruiser. Right, it's a cruiser. So, it is --
It's a lot right next door here.
Yes, right next door to where all the gravel is, right out here. So, it's 2.06 acres. And it fronts the highway. It's directly across the street from Chris's house, historic house across the street.
Sir?
Yes?
You mentioned benefits to the community.
Yes.
I'm wondering specifically what you mean by that as it relates to this community and the individuals that live here.
Okay, well, there's convenience for one, having a store here that will provide you with everything that you need. It's a general store. It's not a $1 store. Nothing in the store is a dollar. That's just the name of the store. It is a turn-of-the-century general store is what this concept is. That's the business model for Dollar General. Property taxes, typically on a two-acre piece like this, with what we're planning to do to it, we'll generate right around $20,000 a year in property tax. Employment opportunities, those are the main ones. Sir?
Yeah, my name is Brian Hickman, resident in Franklin. I live right down here with the solar, very close to your proximity of where you're considering and where the property is being considered.
Yes, sir.
First, a little bit about myself. What's your name, sir?
Bob Gage.
Can I call you Bob?
You sure can.
Okay, Bob. First, a little bit about myself. I run a small marketing company, okay? And for the last 20 years, I have been helping other companies with their brand. So, it's something that I'm intimately aware of, and brand is extremely important. And I'm sure you know that brand is more than a logo. I'm sure for your company, you have an understanding of what brand is. But I'd like to express to you and to the people here what brand means. Let me catch my breath. A little nervous.
Me too.
What brand means to me, Bob.
Sure.
Okay? Brand to me, and what I have told hundreds of my clients over the 20 years of doing business, brand is what people say of you when you are not in the room.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay? That is your brand. Now, we all have a brand, Bob. Brian Hickman has a brand, and when it's a personal brand, it's a reputation, okay? A business has a brand. It's what they're known for when their name is mentioned. It's not the logo. And that's important for you to know, Bob, and for everybody in this room to know. Breathe, Brian. Part of my brand, apparently, is I don't breathe real well in public space. Okay? Okay, so, if I say to you, Bob, the word Volvo, what comes to your mind?
Safe as car on the road.
Safety. It didn't -- it wasn't car or anything. They spent millions of dollars and countless years building that brand.
So, are you pitching me?
I'm speaking to you -- no, 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 no. I'm not looking to work for you. Like I say, I've been in this space for a long time. But thank you. I appreciate the opportunities. Okay? But my point in bringing this up to you, Bob, and to those that are in this room, is that Franklin has a brand.
Okay.
Franklin has a brand. And the people in this room are passionate about their brand. When I married my wife, having moved down from Maine 27 years ago to Delhi and lived in Delhi, I married a Buell. Everybody in this room probably knows a Buell. When I sold my home, I decided I wanted to buy a home in Franklin because the brand of Franklin runs deep. It's authentic. It's real, okay? So, that's the passion that I'm speaking to you, and I assume that many of the people in this room might speak tonight.
I'm sure they would.
They may not use the word "brand," Bob, but I'm going to use the word "brand" because corporate America understands "brand." Okay? So, I'm going to use the word "brand." But I'm going to tell you that this community has a brand, and it's not built on cheap stuff cheap. It's not. When I go and I speak to a business, one of the first things that I say to that business is, "Watch your brand alignment. The things that you align with will affect your brand." We know this to be true for anybody in this room that has children. You say to your child, "Watch your reputation. Watch out who you hang around with because it might spill off on you." Personal brand matters, and it has an effect on those that you associate with. So, when I, Bob, speak to other businesses about brand, I say, "Be careful who you align with because it might rub off on you." Franklin has a brand, Bob, and you must guard. I'm saying this to you in hopes that everybody's here and I'm pointing to the table, and hears it. You got to guard that brand. And with this, I'll just say, I'll end with this. It's something that I've already said, but I hope you hear it, and I hope no offense is taken, and I hope that in my saying it, everybody in this room hears it. A franchise brand has its company's interest at heart. I know it. I've helped hundreds of businesses, and I don't fault that. I'm a private property rights guy. I really am. But we have to guard this brand called Franklin. It's not built from cheap stuff, sold cheaply. That provides 15 jobs and some tax revenue. We're talking about a farming community that has been here for hundreds of years, built on things that are far more authentic than that will be sold in your store. And I wasn't pitching for a job for you, but if anybody at this table --
Did you work for everybody else?
No. But if anybody at this table wants to have a conversation with me, Bob, about the importance of brand, I'm only too eager to have it. I love this community.
It shows.
And the brand alignment must be looked at as a business decision. Brand alignment must be looked at. I have two girls, and I told them, "Be careful who you hang out with. It affects you."
Sure.
We need to guard, and cheap stuff sold cheap is not consistent with this community's brand. And with that, Bob, I thank you.
Thank you. This is not a franchise -- I'm just going to address the thing that you said. This is not a franchise store. Dollar General does not have franchise stores. They're all corporate-run stores. They do hire everyone from the community. They want the manager, assistant manager, everybody that works in the store to live in this town. That way, they can look after the interests of the town a little better than somebody that comes in from outside. So, they do that with every one of their stores. Personally, the company that I work for, we are not Dollar General. We are a development company. We build their stores and lease those buildings back to them. They're purpose-built for them, and we do this all over the country. We're working in 39 states for them. We build about 100 of these a year. These are owned by the company that I work for, but they are leased back to Dollar General. We will have a 15-year lease and with three five-year options whenever this -- if this proceeds on. It has to be approved through corporate before we can move forward and actually go through this process and build the store and make the next step. But no franchises. Just wanted to clarify. Everything in the store, as much stuff as they can buy, is American-made. It is not cheap Chinese knockoff stuff. It is basically everything that you would find in any other department store, Walmart or Kohl's or anywhere else. It is a variety store. So, it is modeled after a turn-of-the-century general store. It's not cheap knockoff.
But remember what your brand is, is what people say when you're not in the room. Reputation is that it's cheap.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
I've lived here 50 years. I paid taxes on that place for 50, that's pretty awful. And nobody loves Franklin as much as me.
I understand that.
Okay, I've lived here 50 years. I'm a historian, okay? And people, sometimes towns, villages have to rebrand themselves, but I'd like to know what is the brand of Franklin? You keep saying there is a brand for Franklin because I've seen this community change so much. We had three grocery stores when we moved here, three. Okay, we had Ogden's, Lumber Yard, we had Matson's. It was a farming community, yes. We had Franklin Milling. This was a viable, viable town. And now, it's just niches. It's fantastic antique stores, but it has changed. It's rebranded itself. And I'm wondering what your concept of the brand of Franklin is?
I don't know if this would be the forum for that, but I would love to have that conversation in a couple of hours.
Oh, why?
Yeah, I would just ask, and that's to end the conversation, but if you guys could speak to the representative.
Let's have a cup of coffee. My daughter's got the bar mitzvah up there. Come down, we'll have a cup of coffee to talk about.
I think the point of that is that he wants to guard Franklin from associating with me, with Dollar General, I believe was what the point was. But anybody else have a question?
That's well taken.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Charlie Taylor. I live a couple houses over.
Yes, ma'am.
Why Franklin and why now? I have a question to you.
These, the locations for the stores are dictated by the retailer. It's not my company that does the research and looks for these stores, looks for these locations. The retailer comes to us and says, "We want a store there." They don't share their research with us. We've got a good idea of why they picked locations, cars going by, rooftops, the median income of the town, that sort of thing. They don't share that information with us. They actually give us coordinates of where they want their stores to be. So, it's our job to go to that spot and try to buy that piece of property. If we can't buy it, we've got to get within a mile of it. So, that's the way the process works for us through Dollar General. So, in order for a spot to be feasible for them, all of their research has to come back that that store will gross $1.2 million a year if they're not interested in the location. So, this spot has hurtled. They have told us this is where they want to be. So, they've done the research, and they feel like they could have a successful story. Yes, sir?
So, you do the real estate development, and you rent this back to Dollar General?
That's correct.
What is Dollar General's relationship to your company? Do they own your company?
No. No.
You're completely separate from Dollar General?
Right. We are business partners. We basically started a relationship with them back eight and a half, nine years ago. They have developers all over the country. We came to them with an idea that we could be their biggest one. We could go through the process, learn what they wanted, and deliver to them what they needed, and do that in every state in the country. They gave us a try. They saw that we could deliver on our promise, and now we build 100 of them a year.
So, what happens when the store doesn't make it?
Well, it's an interesting question, and I hear that a lot. I get that question just about everywhere I go. Dollar General is the strongest retailer in the United States today. They have over 15,000 active stores today. We've been working with them now for nine years, right at -- I have never seen one of their stores close because of lack of sales. Never. The only ones that I've seen close is because, is ones that were in a strip mall, an older store. They move out of the strip mall because they can't control the maintenance of the building, the parking lot, the rent keeps going up, that sort of thing. So, basically, what we do is we purpose-build a ground-up store for them. That's all we do is ground-up stuff. We don't do any infills. We don't do any remodels. It's all ground-up, brand-new construction for them. So, they control at the onset what their rent's going to be, what the building's going to be. They control the maintenance of the building, the parking lot, everything about the store. They have control of. So, that is the business model that we entered into this relationship with them nine years ago. It's worked well. We are, I think in another two months, we'll open our 700th store with them that we have built, our company. So, it's a great relationship. It works really well. It's been successful up to this point. But we don't foresee that store, if we build a store here, we anticipate it being here for at least 30 years. Yes, I'm sorry. She was first. Go ahead.
So, no, I was just curious. There was a comment being made of a Facebook forum in regards to the average life of Dollar General stores, and it was very minimal. They made it out to be like three to five years.
Where'd you see that?
I'm curious.
Where'd you see that?
I saw that on the Town of Franklin Facebook, on the other thread or post, whether people were coming today, and I didn't actually see any actual reference, any material.
Yeah, I'd like to know where the backup, yeah.
I was curious, like, what can you tell us about the average life of a store?
Well, like I said, we've been working with them now for nine years. We've built 700 stores with them, and all of them are still open and active. All of them, from nine years ago. I can speak from personal history with them. I've been involved with this program since we started it. Three years. We wouldn't sink $1 million into these developments if it only got three years. It wouldn't pay for itself. I'm not sure where that information came from.
So, but, so you're saying that this general store is going to be great for the community or Dollar General, but you don't actually work for Dollar General. Once this building is done, you're out of here. So, like, how are we to, like, trust what you're saying if this, I mean, sorry?
Have I given you a reason not to trust me or anything?
No, not yet. But you're gone as soon as the store's sold.
Well, in a sense, yes.
So, who is this to say that, like, oh, they're going to just keep it all in the community? Oh, they're here, they're going to build up the community, when like, if Dollar Store, if Dollar General is going to be here, are we going to talk to a Dollar General person? Who's going to be?
You will after the store opens. You can talk to the manager.
Well, then, how are we going to, but like, it's not a franchise, so like, nobody here is going to tell us.
But our building, we're building this. It's the end user shouldn't make any difference. It's a retail store. That's what we're building.
Yeah, but a retail store run by a giant corporation has no interest in the community it's in.
Why wouldn't they?
Because they're on the front.
If they don't have any interest in it and they just let it flounder and go off, how are they going to make any money with their store?
They're interested in making the money, yes, for the shareholders, and they're off the community, but they're not, like, besides taxes and 15 jobs, like, what are they really going to give back? And, I mean, maybe they are, but like, you're not the person to tell us that. Like, you're just the guy selling the building.
I'm the guy, yes, proposing to build a 9,000's purpose.
But like, Dollar General doesn't go into communities and, like, say, like, we'll be like, because, sorry, but you aren't going to reach there ever again. I mean, not ever again, but that wasn't the point. I apologize.
No, I may not be there ever again after tonight.
But I'm just kidding. You're not the one.
No, I understand what you're saying. I get where you're coming from. The way that this process works and the way that the development works for us is that we are the guys that buy the property. We build the building. We go through the permitting process. We get it ready for a end user. That end user is going to be Dollar General in this case. We do this with every building that we build, regardless of who that end user is. We do lots and lots of these buildings. We build Firestone. We build Starbuck. We build --
But that doesn't make us feel good as a community. You, they weren't just one of them, you know? I don't know. Like, it's not, like, that doesn't make me feel like you care about, like, Franklin. Like, this is just like a clock here's building, go build whatever you want.
I understand what you're saying. And I think part of their commitment to your community is to hire people from your community to run that store. So, it's like, you could be the manager.
But like, you're saying that, like, who, like, you can't make that promise.
Oh, you're saying, you're saying that, I'm saying that, that maybe they're not going to do that whenever the store opens?
I mean, I don't know. You're not Dollar General.
That is correct.
So, I mean, you could say, I'm sorry, but you can say whatever you want to say.
You're right.
And we have no way to hold anybody to that.
You're absolutely correct.
And if they're not going to?
Just to back up the train one quick second.
Yes, sir.
Let me try to understand. I'm Don Hebert. I'm another local. I've only been here 70 years.
That's all? They consider you a local after?
I'm still a local. You build a store.
Yes, sir.
You own the store. You lease it to John O'Driscoll, Dollar General.
Correct.
Do you maintain that store?
They do. That's part of the deal with them. It's called a triple net.
Okay.
Basically, they're responsible for their own insurance, their own maintenance, and their own upkeep on --
On the parking lot and all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, that was part of the deal that they wanted to make with us because they want control of that. So, if a pothole generates out in the parking lot, they don't have to get ahold of somebody else to come fix it. They do it themselves.
What kind of --
So, that's the whole idea behind that.
What kind of hurdle do you have on them to bank in your building?
Well, it's in the lease. If they don't maintain the landscaping, the parking lot, the building, they start getting penalties in their lease. If they don't do it within a certain amount of time, we come back and make any corrections in and fine them for it. So, there is teeth in the lease for them. It's expensive for them not to maintain it. Is that your --
Yes, thank you. I just want a clarification.
Back of the room?
As a developer, would you do to make sure that building suits the look of this town?
That's why I'm here, getting feedback. There actually is no requirements regarding the exterior of that building. I know there's been some comments regarding the historic quality of your town and what the exterior looks like. We'll do everything we can to get it to the point where everybody is happy with that building. I mean, there's obviously a line that we can't put a ton of money into this thing and not be profitable for us, but there is quite a bit we can do to change the exterior appearance of this building.
A wood would be a possibility?
I'm sorry?
A wood would frame be a possibility?
There is a version of that building that is wood. It does have a gable roof instead of the flat roof like you've seen at some of the others. It's a completely different-looking building, and it would probably fit a little better your town than the flat-roofed version. But yes, those are all possibilities, and those are things that typically, whenever we have our public hearings, whenever we get to that point of it, that's the time whenever we flush all of that out and we bring examples of what we think would look good, get feedback look good, get feedback from the town, and make some modifications and see if we can come to an agreement. Yes, ma'am.
You said that they build all the Dollar Generals from the ground up?
We do.
You do?
My company.
Okay. Does Dollar General build any other com, any other buildings?
They have quite a few other developers that work for them in different parts of the country.
Okay, because there was, there's a Dollar General in Unadilla that used to be a supermarket.
Okay.
And that was a...
That's the enemy.
I apologize.
No, no, uh, it's a good question. Uh, there are other developers that work for Dollar General that do just that. They do infills. They come in and they get, if there's an empty building that's the right size, they will come in and remodel it for that. That is not something that my company does.
Bob, what's the newest one you guys have done? Davenport?
The newest one?
In Delaware County.
Yes, I think probably.
Did you do one in Masonville?
Uh, I have to go back and look at the...
That's one of yours, I'm sure.
That might not be ours.
I've got a question. Also, can you get this? Now, you guys, are you guys asking for any tax incentives?
No, sir. No, sir. We will not ask for a dime from the, from the town.
And how much does each store generate for sales this year?
Uh, they will have to, uh, on a minimum, 1.2 million dollars a year, gross sales, or we won't build the store. So, we have gotten the preliminary thumbs up from Dollar General. This is where they wanna be. They've done all the research. It has hurdle at 1.2 per year. So, um, everyone that you see, every single one that you see will...
That means part of that sales tax.
Yes.
For Delaware County.
That's right.
To help our base.
Instead of taking it somewhere else and giving it to a different county, yes, it'll stay here. Correct.
And you're, and you're gonna hire all local people?
And, uh...
Like our school, I haven't heard nothing here about our school. Our school over here don't even have any management that lives in the district. Not one management.
Really?
And that's why I'm asking, a few guys would have local people.
Yes, and that's, that's the idea, is to get everyone that works in the store, hire local.
But you don't hear nothing about, nobody's complaining about the school, while the management lives everywhere else.
I guess nobody can do anything about that now, it's already done.
I just wanted to break it up, you know?
Well, appreciate that. Yes.
Can you speak to what kind of community Dollar General normally approaches?
What the, what the target is? The target is population of 1,200 people, median income around 40,000 dollars a year. There is, uh, a lot of other factors that go into that, but that is the basic target that they're at. So, uh, basically what we're doing now is we're just going back, we're starting in the east, way up in Maine, and we're going back and infilling as many of the small towns as we can, and we're headed west. So, uh, like I said, we're building about a hundred of them a year. And that's why we're, you're starting to see them come into these smaller towns, and, uh, it feels like we're getting a little closer together. They are getting a little closer together. But the sales are there.
Are you gonna build the country around this, like you do in Oak Eagle?
Uh, we can, sure.
That's good. I'll be, I can all be worked out.
Yeah, fence and landscaping, that's...
We can put certain things in, shrubbery, whatever.
Yeah, fence and landscaping, that's typically a migration. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a distance between, say, like, for example, okay, Unadilla is not Dollar General, it's Family Dollar, but do, do you know if they figured out some sort of a distance between the Dollar Stores?
Their stores.
In general, so that they're not in competition with one another?
Well, typically, whenever we come in, we typically don't put them closer than five miles apart from another Dollar General.
Okay, that's right.
Now, if there, there could be a Family Dollar sitting across the street from this location, and we'd still put one in, but what they do whenever that happens is they, whenever they're doing all the research, they take into account everything that is going to that existing Dollar Store. And if there is still enough left over to support our store, then they move ahead and build a store. So, all of that is taken into account, all the other businesses that are, that are around it. If, uh, the incomes are there, if the traffic's there, then calculate that in...
So, I understand that you're the developer.
Yes.
So, is this not uncommon, that these stores were built by a developer and then rented out to the, the different stores?
For all stores, or for...
Uh, just, I, I, basically the small, like, all these and littles?
I'm not sure what's all these and those others business model is. I know that Dollar General does not own any of their stores. None of them.
Okay, so that was my, okay.
Yeah, so every store that you see at Dollar General, somebody is leasing that building to Dollar General.
Okay. Do you know if it's the same for, like, Family Dollar and...
I believe it is for Family Dollar. Now, the other ones, the Dollar Trees, I think there's 12 actually Dollar Stores in the market right now. The only real competition that is in the same market as Dollar General is Family Dollar. Those are the only two that actually are similar.
Competition.
All the rest of them are all, everything's a buck.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, my name's Tim Robinson. I got a question. Have you checked the zoning on how far a business has to be from a residential?
Yes, sir, I have.
Uh, because the Town of Franklin had a big business here a few years ago. They wanted to come in on Walton Franklin Road.
Okay.
And they turned them down, which that employee has thirty-some or better people now, and it's cleaner than any Dollar Store ever was.
Understood.
And that they turned them down because it was so close to other residents.
Okay, so here's, here's what your rule is, what Franklin's rule is. In order to put a retail store at that location, or I guess anywhere outside of the village line, or, I'm not really sure where that definition is.
Anywhere in the town.
Anywhere in the town. So, in order to put a retail business, you have to be at least a thousand feet away from the residents.
Correct.
Okay, so...
In the township.
Correct. So, the problem, that, that is another reason why I'm here, is that if this, if we do move forward with this, I will be asking for a variance from that.
Well, that's, why didn't the board in this town allow this other business, which was gonna be a half, two miles out of town?
I have nothing to do with that. I don't...
Over thirty-some employees, and they said no. But now they left, and this was a local man that wanted to put it in, and now they're letting out of state...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, they're not letting...
...franchise people come in. And they're not...
They're not, they're not letting us do anything. We haven't made application yet.
No, but you are proposing...
Yes.
...to come in.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And the town is considering allowing you to come in, when they wouldn't even allow a resident.
We're not considering anything, 'cause nobody's asked us yet.
Yes.
Right, but it is being proposed.
But there's nothing on the table. We haven't asked the question yet. What I'm here for tonight...
No, but you're proposing.
Yes, sir, that's correct. But what I'm here for tonight, and why everybody is here, is I need to get a good idea of whether this is something that is gonna work for us and you. If it's not, if it's, if it's something that everybody in this town is gonna oppose, I'm not gonna build a store there. Plain and simple. So, that's why I'm here tonight. I'm trying to give you as much information as I have. I want you to give me as much information as you have. Let's get everything out on the table. If we can make it work, we can. If we can't make it work, we can't make it work. Simple as that. So, one of the things that I'll be asking for is a variance from the thousand-foot rule. Currently, Chris's house across the street is gonna be 185 feet from our building, once it's done. So, that's the variance that I'm gonna be asking for, and that's what is gonna hinge, everything is gonna hinge on.
There's more than that. You've got the next two places down, you've got the Olive West Place.
I think I'm over a thousand feet from the next one.
No, you're not a thousand feet from the beach. And beach is beyond the other one. And you come back this way, you've got another one across the road, you've got the old gas station across the road. You're all within a thousand feet.
Understood.
So, there's a lot more than just Chris's and Paul's.
So, that's the basic concept.
Property, seven dollars.
Understood.
Is it a thousand feet from the building that you're putting up?
That is the way that we interpret the code, yes.
Not, not the property line?
No, the way that we read it, it's a thousand feet.
So, if you move that building further up on the hill, that would give you extra space?
Theoretically, that's true, and I wouldn't have to ask for a variance in a way we built.
Okay.
Well, I just have one question. Um, now, we here talked earlier, asked you earlier about what this store possibly gives to the community, and you talked about jobs, you talked about after, you know, is there any sort of community donation?
Charities?
Right.
Yes.
Where the school might benefit, or direct community, or...
They do have a charity program. Those typically run through the manager of the store. Will make submit, submissions to corporate office twice a year, what the charity is, what is being asked, and they'll decide and say yes or no when they're ready to go. Typically, it's a yes, and they do contribute to local charities.
Do you have, do you have, like, a, I need to ask, but, like, an average figure?
No, I don't.
We don't.
It varies so much from one place to the next. I mean, some, some towns don't even ask. Uh, it's just... Sorry?
So, you're considering building a store when our downtown has empty stores? Uh, for instance...
I did see the empty store.
...a large building with a dorms deli and also another store.
I did see that.
I'm gonna guess it's close to the square footage that you're considering building?
Uh, it looks, it looks pretty all over the street.
Maybe there's room to extend, uh, wouldn't cost you anywhere near as much. Why isn't Dollar General coming here if they love our town so much and say, you know, there's, there are two large properties right in the center of Main Street, and your town would be greatly improved if we could open a store and use historic buildings, and you could pay rent to buy the buildings, giving people a decent profit, kind of, hold them currently.
That's a good question.
Why would Dollar, Dollar General wanna do that if they care about our building?
It's a good question.
Yeah. It has to be more of a, sort of, not exactly, but like I said, you know, like Walmart, you know, waiting Main Street, killing Main Street. Only Anta had that problem. It was disease department store, no one would care. So, anyway, I'm, that's my question for you. I know you're the, you're the contractor builds for them, but why don't they ask us about the real estate that exists?
Uh, that is a hard question for me to ask. Typically, when they send me into these towns, we're building ground-up stores. If they're interested in infilling an existing space, another developer would be here.
Have you ever done that?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Sure have. Now, keep in mind, I saw the building that you're referring to down there, and, um, typically, it is gonna be more expensive to renovate that building than it would be to build a ground-up store for them, in order to retrofit it to work for what they needed to do. I'm not saying that's the case here, but that, I've found that to be true in a lot of cases.
And there are two buildings there, only they're separated by the post office.
What about parking?
And parking is designed and there's...
The sign.
Forty, forty percent.
Will, will anyone from the town, Franklin, ever see a person from corporate Dollar General? Will they come and speak to people, Franklin?
Not likely. They typically, they typically don't do that.
Any more contact than the hiring manager?
So, where would this fall on?
Correct. So, if there is something that is, um, of great concern to you, you can relay it through me. I can get the information from them and come back and talk to you. If it's something that's huge, that you absolutely have to talk to somebody from corporate, I can see if I can arrange that to have somebody here.
Can you talk...
Typically, that doesn't happen.
Can you talk a little bit about why they, they send you instead of also...
Because it's my building.
But it's their business.
We're the, we're the ones that are investing the eight-hundred-and-fifty, nine-hundred-thousand dollars into this. We're the ones that are going through this process, permitting, rezoning, whatever it is, variances, doing all the construction. It's our building. So, theoretically, the end user does not go through that process. The person that owns the building, constructs the building, is the one that does all that. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, again. So, if the Franklin Dollar General were the first one to fail, what are they gonna do with that building?
We will put another retailer in.
Okay.
We'll put their competitor in.
What would that store do to, I live across the street.
Okay.
What would that do to our property value, too?
Chris was having the same questions, uh, has the same concerns. He feels that it's gonna drop his property value by 50%. I personally don't feel that. Uh, like I said, we've got nine years' history with these guys. We've put them in, uh, residential areas in the past. Those prices have either stayed the same or gone up. We have not seen prices drop in a residential area because of that store going in. Personal history, I'm not saying that it won't happen. Chris may be a hundred percent right. Maybe your property values will drop. I don't know that. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, but we don't foresee that. We don't, we haven't seen that in the past. Whenever we've gone into situations like this, we don't think it'll happen.
But, but it is only one-third of the road frontage. Two-thirds are still, will be possessed by me. So, nothing's gonna change there as of now, except I'll bury what remains of the old barn that's been falling down, which is a little...
Which you'll probably have our contractor push over for you while we're here.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
With the store over there, you're gonna have lights and bright lights and everything. I know from here, where they put on the LED lights, they're bright, and on across the road, just those lights shine.
Understood. So, I can answer that. So, the store will be open from 9:00 AM till 9:00 PM, six days a week, from, uh, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sundays. Everything that is designed on the exterior of these buildings, all the lights that are hung off the buildings and all the ones that are in the parking lot, are all designed with what they call cutoff shields on them. What that does is it points all the light straight down, and we do have to prove, and we will provide drawings, they're called photometric drawings, and they love, they measure the level of light intensity at the property line all the way around the site. We cannot exceed 1.2 lumens at six feet high, anywhere on that property line. And we've got to prove to Dollar General that we're doing that, because they are light-conscious. They understand that it's a nuisance if their lights are shining off into somebody else's property. So, they're very aware of it, and they control it. The lights go off an hour after the store closes, the sign goes off, all the lights in the parking lot. There will be one that remains open just for safety issues, and one inside the store that remains on for safety issue. Uh, but they do, they are aware of that, and they do, do everything they can to control the light pollution. Sir?
Yeah, um, a lot of people know, a lot of people don't. I worked in land development, did over 600 lots in this town.
Okay.
And when you have a business or something like that, near one, it drops the value majorly on the property.
Okay.
And I know that for a fact, 'cause I was in a big time. We see something like your Dollar General, walk right on by, because you aren't gonna get the money.
Please understand, I am not trying to convince you of anything that...
So, it's gonna hurt these people.
I am not trying to say that blow smoke up your skirt and tell you it's gonna be the best thing ever, and your property values are gonna be twice as much as they are now. I'm trying to tell you everything that I know with the history that I have with this company. I believe in putting everything on the table. I want, I want you to know the worst, absolute worst thing about a Dollar General in this development that I can think of. If we can get past it, great. If we can't, we will go find another site.
But you're gonna say property values...
I just told you what my history was with them for the last nine years. We build these in 39 different states. I do not have that history that, once we build a store, everything around it, prices drop on. We haven't had that experience.
Do you keep data?
I'm a real estate broker, and I would be frank.
Okay.
Because of the character of this town, and because of the fact that there are people from the New York City area who are from here and wanna be first-time residents, I promise you, property values will drop if there is a Dollar General in the store, because what they like...
Anywhere in this town.
Yeah.
Unless you work out by the traffic circle?
No, it's too far. It won't work.
But, yes, in town, what they're looking for is what we've got. And when you add something like a Dollar General, you have now become a cookie cutter town, and you do not look different from originally.
Fair statement. Anybody else? Questions? Yes, ma'am?
I'm concerned about the quality of items that Dollar General offers. Do any of their stores offer fresh fruits, vegetables, meat, seafoods?
Uh, no, they do have canned goods. They'll sell bread, eggs, milk, that sort of thing. Very limited. There's about 10% of the floor space is contributed to food, but it's all prepackaged. Nothing's made there. They don't have a deli. They don't have a meat market. None of that, no. Sir?
I think we have another problem with Dollar General standing in our town, and that is, we have a Maravado on Main Street. We have one gas station, and, as you know, gas stations make their money, at least the site does, and Maravado's a big company, but they make their money from the sundries they sell. They sell food, pizza, ice cream, milk, uh, everything else your store would sell, just smaller.
So...
And should your store collect 1.2 million dollars a year, you might very well put our gas station at...
Not Maravado.
Typically, there's about a 10% overlap with the existing store, not a convenience store. Convenience stores, uh, are pretty much bulletproof against anything like what we're talking about. But if there was another market, a grocery store, there would be about a 10% overlap in what we sell and what they sell. Yes, ma'am?
From experience, for last year.
Yes, ma'am.
I wore t-shirts.
Okay.
We did it twice. Uh, we had a custom, uh, chappers come in to do some work. I usually, because that was the way I was raised, when we have people working for us, I can do something I just do. At that moment, that afternoon, we ended up with five men. Hungry. They were gonna work, because you work with the weather. That's what you do. So, my husband suggested hamburgers. So, good idea. They can eat them in the truck, in the trucker, whatever. I made a salad, and I always have dessert. So, anyway, guess what? I had no hamburger buns. So, I went up to Maravado's. Do you know a package of six hamburger buns cost me more than a pound of hamburger?
They wrote that to our store guy.
And the good thing happened, they only had one package there. And the good thing, 'cause I would've bought it, I would've bought it, but I needed a lot more than six hamburger buns.
Sure.
So, I ended up having to drive to Sydney.
Right. Well, that's, that's another advantage.
So, I think, uh, for me to buy groceries in Maravado is unlikely. And I'm not saying I'm for it. I haven't been to a Dollar Store or a Dollar General in all years, probably less than 20 times. I don't know. This past week, because I heard all these terrible things about food in there, and outdated, and I don't know what else, I went to two different ones, the Dollar Store and a Dollar General. And, uh, I found a dairy case very adequate at both stores, which, Lord, anybody knows that dairy industry is hurting. And, uh, I heard outdated foods. I looked around there, and I didn't see any food that was really outdated. As far as the fresh, fresh fruit and fruit, no, they weren't there. But I think what a lot of us are looking for, that would be going in there, are that trying last-minute thing or something you don't have, and, um...
You don't have to do it for $20 for it.
Yeah. And, uh, whatever happens, happens. I understand. But that one day, it did But that one day, it hit bar, that, that, it's what, it was, I mean, it was, I used to tell you, call it what you want.
They're holding you hostage. It's the only game in town, so there's nothing you can do about it.
And there's nothing we can do about it.
Right.
And we're not a wealthy community. And I just, I just, that, when Mr. Pugh was talking about the brand, I find that hard to have. The brand that it's all right that Maravito's can just stick it to you?
You're going to say yes, okay.
I did. What would you do about traffic, you know, coming in and out of the store? No matter where you put it, you're going to have someone, you know, it's going to impact someone. So I've been through other towns, Earlville, there's a Dollar General right in front of someone's house.
That's ours.
And the driveway is offset so that the traffic is not coming in and out right in front of their house. So, I mean, is there any...
Oh, yeah, nothing's in store.
No matter where you put it, can you make it so that traffic, I mean, their headlights right into someone's...
Yes. So a little bit of information about Dollar Generals. They will generate ten cars per hour. And that'll happen from the time they open the doors to the time they close the doors, all day long, ten cars per hour. We will have to go through DOT to get a permit to put a driveway on that road. They will dictate to us the location of that road. We will make suggestions. We'll try to make it as easy as the adjacent, on the adjacent neighbors as we can. They will dictate to us because they have certain distances that they have to meet from existing drives. There'll be one right next door, so we'll need to get as far away as we can. It'll be a thirty-six-foot wide drive. There'll be two lanes out, one lane in. So it'll be a full access, it'll turn left and right coming out of the store. If the traffic is such on the existing road and the impact that we have on it makes a big enough impact, they will make us put a traffic light in or a turn lane. All of those things are still up in the air. Those are things that have to be gone through, researched, we'll have to provide traffic studies to DOT and they will tell us what we have to do. And we have to meet their requirements or we can't have the driveway. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I have a few questions. The variance, you talked about submitting a variance.
Yes.
So who would the variance be submitted to? Would it be the planning board of Franklin?
It's the zoning board of appeals. They haven't come to blame, but they've gone to Mark Jacobs. Mark has turned them down because of the problem with... They could go to the zoning board of appeals, they will apply there. And before they ever make an decision, they'll have, they'll have a public hearing. And if they give the variance and it goes on, then they can make an application here. But they still have to go back to Mark, Mark has to sign off on it. Then there'll be another public hearing, so it'll be two more. If it goes through or starts to go through, it'll be two public hearings. Which a lot of the other little things can be worked out, like, you know, I mean, as he said, like the driveway, the DOT thing, maybe shrubs around the outside of it, hours of operation.
Everything's open here.
Area, local towns that you've come to to present, putting in a Dollar General and building a building, what towns have said no? Where have you presented and what towns don't have?
Oh, that's a tough question. I do this every day, so I'm going to have, my memory is not...
Jefferson.
I mean, local, you know, surrounding towns.
Jefferson.
Jefferson is not...
Onianta, Lawrence, we're getting ready to do it.
No, they have rejected it. But you've presented to the town that they said no.
Onianta did, the first location. We're looking at the second location there now. So they said no to the first spot.
But yet there's two other Dollar Stores there.
In Onianta. Well, this was, I think it was...
And these, yeah, smaller rural towns and villages that are more our size. Onianta's a city.
Uh, Lawrence is, actually, we called it Onianta. It was actually Lawrence is where we were rejected the first time. But we are zoning back, we moved down the street a little ways and we're trying to put another one in there. So they kicked us out of the first spot.
So I have a question. They don't like location or we decide we don't want it here?
Yes, ma'am.
We just keep pushing and pushing until you...
No, no, no. I've done this long enough to where if it looks like we are not going to be successful, this is very expensive to do this process, very expensive. So in order for me to even get to the first step, whenever I submit a variance, it's going to cost about $50,000 to spend on drawings and research and it's very expensive. So if I cannot make this successful at the end, I'm not going to spend the money at the beginning. So if this is, everybody's dead set against it, we don't think we can get through the variance process, we're going to stop. I mean, we've got minimum money invested in this site so far. That's why I'm here. Before we go spend all that money, I want to take the temperature of the town and I want to see what's, what's what.
You mentioned other sites, what are the, all of the other sites for Franklin?
Can I get a list to you? Because I will have to, I've got, like I said, this is...
So there's multiple. There's more than two sites you're looking at?
We have, oh, multiple sites here.
Per Dollar General. So this site said no, one of the other potentially said six miles.
Potentially the one down the street that Chris had taken me down to, the old house with the buildings, the lights behind it.
I don't.
That spot is one potential that may work. There's one over here on the corner that Chris thought may work also. It's, it may have enough property. I think you were thinking it was like four acres or something like that?
No, I have, no idea.
One acre. So there's a couple of different opportunities for us if this does not work. Now whether that thousand feet applies to everything else that we're talking about. It doesn't to one down there.
The village is not part of the township.
Okay, so the village, that one...
It would have to be dealt with, I have no idea.
The town doesn't have zoning. The village, so there's no review in the town. You can get a building in town, is my understanding.
So it'd all be outside agencies, you know, the CCD, DOT, the DEP, the EBA, all of those outside agencies would have to be in it instead of the local ones. But we'd still go through the same process. So do you have some property you want to sell?
No, absolutely not. No, I love Franklin too much for Dollar General, so...
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about they, the company or company Dollar General has done research to plot coordinates where they feel will be most marketable so they can make their 1.2 million dollars gross. Have they done research on how it would affect the local business owners here and prevent other local companies from coming into Franklin?
Prevent other local companies, I'm not sure how to do that.
Well, she means...
Like other small general stores.
She means like if you put your store in, there's somebody going to put a small grocery store in. Mom and Pop.
Somebody is going to put a family dollar in or something like that.
No, no.
I have no control over whatever else. Zero control.
So the research is done from coordinate location and from...
Profitability, successfulness of the store, yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
This isn't necessarily for you, but Mayor Tom Brakes is here as well. And when we're talking about village versus town, what's the village stance with no zoning in the village versus the town of Franklin having zoning and Mr. Downen taking you around to various types of sites? I'm just wondering what the village's stance is on Dollar General within the village.
Mr. Mayor, I think that would be yours.
Well, we live in a democracy, so I have to accede to my board. But I would say that it'd be awfully difficult to consider Dollar General a good neighbor in the village just because of the, the architecture and, you know, I don't know if really there's, there's a lot of traffic is obviously that's alluring to your organization. But I think it would pretty well gum things up if it was in the middle of the village. So I don't think it would be a real good mix.
Thank you, Tom.
Anybody else? I understand everybody's a little emotional about all this, I get it. We're not there yet. It certainly looks like this is a kind of a no-go from this stance at this point in time. But we'll alert everybody if we do decide to move forward. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
No, I'm okay, I just...
Somebody behind you.
I'm just wondering how long this, like, it's been in consideration by the Dollar General? How long have they been considered?
Six months.
Thank you.
Give or take, that's a rough question. Yes, sir.
Dollar General required to give you facts and figures about the potential income that they're going to generate?
Their research?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
Or do you build anything?
They, they sign the lease and guarantee to pay the rent. That's basically what we want from them.
So you build the building and then you're...
They're on the hook for fifteen years to pay the rent.
But you're hoping they'll be able to pay that...
There's no reason to think they would, sir.
Well, that's what I was asking, did they show you any figures?
They're a, they're a best-in-class retailer. They are a Class A retailer. There's no reason to think. They are backed up by banks. If they can't make payments, banks will make the payments for them. We will, we will get paid, we will get rent for the building for fifteen years.
Has ever had a Dollar General not paid the rent?
Yes, ma'am.
How long will you continue to pursue Franklin as an area? Like if this piece of property doesn't work and you go to a different one, like how long will you continue to search for a location?
So now that we know what the feeling is from everyone and what the obstacles are a thousand feet, if we can't find another piece of property that will get us to the point to where we don't have to have a variance, then we probably will not come. That process is, I don't know, it could take up to another month. But whenever I get back to Nashville tomorrow, we'll have a meeting about this meeting tonight and put our heads together and figure out what do we want to pursue.
And how will you, I'm sorry, how will you let the community know that decision? Because you're back here next month or...
We will relay that through your planning board.
They call me.
Okay, I know where you live. So if I read you correctly, you're getting the impression that this is a no-go?
I'm getting the impression you guys don't want me here, yes.
Really? You don't think you want to show hands or anything like that?
Okay, let's have a show of hands. Who is supporting the Dollar General coming to Franklin, regardless of where the location is?
Not regardless of the location.
Yeah, not regardless of the location.
Not necessarily that location, possibly that location, but Franklin, period. We support it coming to town.
If they have, if you can find a place with a thousand feet from a house.
Two people, three people, four people, five people.
I don't think it would be a problem.
If they can find a lot...
A show, a show of hands.
How many people from Franklin drives over to Hillstone, people to Dollar General?
All of you.
Where does a town start?
In the winter, you don't want to do that.
Some people still... So one more, one more show of hands, who would support it in that location? Next door.
How many if he's a thousand feet from a house?
I'm getting a dozen.
How many if he can find a lot that's a thousand feet from, from a house?
He's not going to find that lot.
Well, that's not true.
In Franklin?
Well, I could theoretically find it in the lot that I've got. If I move it, if I move it back up the hill, I can...
We might need some clarity on that.
What about no Dollar General, period?
Yeah, who wants, who does not want a Dollar General at all? Everybody else, almost everybody.
The area is super saturated.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think maybe the people who are supporting it aren't here?
That is typically the way that it works. Normally, in my experience, coming to these meetings, the people that oppose the, my project are the ones that show up. The people that support it don't show up. That is normally the way it works. Sir?
Uh, you know, I think the biggest, I think most people would use it. I'm not sure if it fits in Franklin. I'm not for or against it. But I know when we put this cell tower up, which we, we're the same type of company that you have. We have a crown castle, we're the investors, they put the tower up, you know, put the services on. The town does benefit from it.
Right.
And so that's the type of business you are. You, you build it and then lease it out or whatever. And that's what we, you know, we're joint owners and stuff. But, you know, it's a, it is a tough situation. I would probably, I would go to it off and on, I'm not, you know...
I think everybody is really good.
You know, I'm not saying it's what Franklin doesn't need, I'm not sure. But the tax revenue's a big thing, as it was brought up. The sales taxes for the county, that's a big thing.
If you want to get hamburger buns. That one's not paying for him.
I mean, there are benefits and whether, you know, I guess what I would be interested in is see what the floor plan would be. You know, instead of you're, you're denying it because it says Dollar General.
That's right.
Whether it could be, you know, the fencing, the shrubbery, the lighting control, the lights was an issue. Listen, that, there's a lot of issues that, I mean, whether it can be fixed or not. You know, but, I mean, as Tim said, if you put a business...
Don't misunderstand, we're not going to give up, you know, just, you know, on a win.
But I, you know, I'm the town supervisor, so I'll be...
Yes, sir.
Sometimes won't be a good thing. But, you know, there's, there's good to almost everything, whether, as you said, this is Franklin has a label, Franklin, you know, but it is a town of Franklin too, it's not just a village. And, you know, we've, you know, we've got a, you know, there's, the, the situation that's in there now a thousand feet from residents is almost impossible to have.
I agree.
Because that's a long way.
It is a long way.
There's no doubt. And with what...
This building probably couldn't have been built.
Municipality can't.
I know, but if, if this was a retail or commercial establishment, you couldn't have built that building.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't zoning at the time.
It's very close to Chris's house.
That's all, no, but you're right. You know, it wouldn't be able to be built here. But it's, I mean, to, and that's what zoning is for, is to control development and not stop it.
So let us, let us do a little bit more research. We'll come up with a few ideas.
And I must say, I thank you very much for coming into the business. No, it wasn't, you know...
I've escorted out of town from the police before for my own safety. Yes, ma'am.
How long has it been, and you probably don't know, but how long has it been since we have had what we would call a grocery in Franklin? Two years.
Twenty cars. Twenty...
No, I'm asking, how long? Two years. I don't care, I want to know how long it's been.
Four or five years.
Store that sold some groceries. Because the question was asked, why did they pick Franklin and the location? So I think that my, somebody thought that probably was the reason.
Well, there's a, there's a need here, obviously. Ten percent is tip, is the typical store. They do have, I'm talking to you, sir. Ten percent is the typical store for the grocery. Oh, okay.
Now, you're talking about fifteen employees.
Maximum.
What is their salary or wage?
I don't know. I don't know that. It really, it really shouldn't matter unless you're looking for a job. Half of them are typically full-time employees, the other half are part-time employees. What their salary ranges are, I have no idea. I'm not concerned with that, I don't want to know that. But if you're looking for a job, you can find that out. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a comment, if Dollar General, you're here as the Realtor, you're the company builder. But if Dollar General is, wants to be a good neighbor
Yes, ma'am.
and is concerned about the community, they should be here. They should be answering these questions for our community.
I appreciate what you're saying.
You said that's not going to happen. So to me, they're not a good neighbor.
Well, you, you don't want them here anyway, so it wouldn't make any difference when they were there.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, if they want to really be a neighbor and concerned about the community, I'd like...
I understand what you're saying. Whenever I say they want to be a good neighbor, I mean, they want to make the building fit into the community. They want to put landscaping up, they want to provide a service to you. That's them being a good neighbor. Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, as a young girl, maybe one of the youngest people here, Franklin's a, I guess she has the... Franklin's a very safe town. I feel comfortable going for walks, I can go for a run. Does all of that on higher felons?
Absolutely not, what retailer does?
What?
I don't know that I've ever... Higher felons.
Yes. Felons.
Seems like an odd question. No, not that I know of.
There aren't any in Franklin.
Is there?
Franklin villain, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I normally don't speak up. I said I normally don't speak up because I don't take sides. But is your company publicly held?
No. Dollar General is.
Who are the major investors in your company?
We have a, it's almost a REIT. It is a group of investors that put money in to fund these Dollar Generals. And I'm not allowed to give you the names of their people. I can't do that. But Dollar General is a publicly held company. And you can buy stock and it's really good.
But what I'm curious is, are any of them stockholders in your company?
No, no, not stockholders. We're not helping to treat.
I mean, okay, no.
Well, folks, I really appreciate you coming out. Thank you very much for all the questions. Hopefully I have put some concerns to rest, maybe I've brought up some new ones. We will be in touch with your planning board and let them know what we intend to do if we are proceeding or not. We should have that answered within the next two, three weeks. They all have my contact information. If you guys have any more questions or you want to send me an email, please feel free. Again, thanks for coming out, really appreciate it.
Thank you.